Dear Heavenly Father, I just thank you for today. I thank you for spring. I thank you for this council and just ask that the decisions we make are pleasing to you. Lord, I ask that you be with Broderick with the loss of his son and just ask you to be with their family in this difficult time.
Yes.
Just thank you for everyone that's here, whether it's storms, to be here. Just thank you for our city. Thank you for our first responders. Please keep them safe. We ask all this in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with the minutes from February the 28th through the 24th.
Move to approve.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Before you approve, there is an error on page 10. Error correct, Long Beach, it should be Longview, so I'll make that change before pretty much agenda, so if you can approve with that change.
Move to approve with the change that Cassandra mentioned.
Second. Got a motion by Wynn, second by Curtis, all those who favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. M1. Morning, Leanne.
Good morning. This is a request to award the mowing contract for Parks and Recreation to multiple vendors. During the spring and summer sessions, the Parks Department relies heavily on various contractors to help staff and to help staff keep up with the continuous need for areas to be mowed. This allows us to keep our parks in other areas, such as the area around City Hall, as well maintained for visitors to use and provides an opportunity for our team to concentrate on other maintenance within our park system. We put this bid out on February 28th and March 6th. A pre-bid meeting was held on March the 7th. There were seven contractors that submitted bids. Staff took into consideration the prices given for services and on-call availability. The recommended vendors based on location are listed in the bid tabulation. The document was pretty lengthy, which is why it's not on a presentation, but you guys should have it in your packets. We have listed for every area a primary, a secondary, and a tertiary. It is recommended the city council consider authorizing the city manager to award bid number 24-011 to multiple vendors as listed for various mowing areas in accordance with the design bid tabulation sheet to furnish all necessary materials, equipment, superintendents, and labor for mowing and ground maintenance at various parks, facilities, and medians.
Before we go forward, I've got one card here. It didn't say what item to speak on. Nikita Rogers.
I'm here.
Can you just tell me what item you're speaking on?
I'm just here as a public citizen to address the conference that I'm having with Mayor of the Cities Program.
Okay. Any questions? Actually, it's just on the screen. Actually, I'll go ahead and address that before we finish your thing. To speak on an item has to be on the agenda, and this is on the agenda, so just visit afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions for Leanne?
I just have one question or comment perhaps. Some of the people in my district saw the word "mowing" on this item, and they wanted to know if that was going to include all the growth around the railroad tracks that are behind their homes that are growing up into their areas.
So, listed in your bid packet are several different areas. So, it's like Bergfield Children's Park, City Park, Crescent Park, Douglas, Emmett J. Scott, Faulkner, Noble Young, P.T. Cole, Pollard, Gasso Way, Herndon Hills. There are a few areas that are on medians, but I don't know that that is included. Do you know? It is not included.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to make that known publicly so that they would know that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Move to approve, M1.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those who favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. M2.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Karen Williams, traffic engineer for the city. So, here with a engineering contract for signal re-timing as part of our year four ITS master plan, which is Intelligent Transportation System, are upgrading and modernizing our traffic signal system. So, just a little bit of a background, going back to our original plan, in the first five years, we were looking to re-time approximately 15 intersections per year. And then years six through 10, 30 intersections. And really, just as kind of historically, you want to try to re-time signals every three to five years, or when you have major traffic changes, different things going on. And so, you can kind of see the trend of how we're doing. After this year, we will have re-timed approximately just under 60% of our signals in the city of Tyler. And we need to start looking at going back and looking at some of those corridors that were re-timed going back to 2019. As an example, Beckham, near the hospital district, was one of the original corridors that was re-timed. You got the medical district occurring, so we got to start going back and re-looking at those, but we are still working through corridors that we haven't touched yet. But you can see the progress that we made and continue to chip away at that. Now, the benefits of why do we re-time is, one, we want to smooth out those flows. We want to reduce frustrations that drivers have on the roadway and get people across town faster. But we also try to quantify, what is that benefit? And this is one chart that you can kind of see, we put a monetary value to that reduction in delay. And last year, which was the Old Jacksonville and the West Loop, you look at equivalent of about $11.3 million as far as savings in delay that we have been able to provide through our re-timing benefits. As far as year four, what is it addressing? It's 15 intersections on the Gentry, North Palace, and North Glenwood corridors. And so, why these corridors? First, they're tying into some existing. The map on your right, the red are the corridors that we have re-timed in the previous years. The green is what we will be re-timing this year. So, we've also been able to get our technology upgrades completed or soon to be completed on these corridors as far as communications that allow us to do this re-timing easier, more efficiently, also keep clocks in step. Our controllers and detection upgrades that we use to detect vehicles all make that signal timing more efficient and should already be seeing some of those benefits on these corridors. Also, I want to kind of emphasize, as part of our downtown traffic study, we really focused on the needs of improve North Palace and North Glenwood. As we do the construction downtown and wanted to utilize the capacity that's available on North Palace and North Glenwood, that we don't have coordinated signal timing today to get people to be able to use those and be more efficient and have that as an opportunity. So, it is, the contract is for $112,480, and it was approved, the funding, by the Hacent Sales Tax Board yesterday. So, with that, it is requested that city council authorize the city manager to execute an engineering contract with Kimley Horn and Associates in the amount of $112,480 for the Intelligent Transportation System Master Plan Year Four Traffic Signal Retiming Improvements.
So, you mentioned Beckham. Do you know what the reduction in wait time is on that?
I do not remember off the top of my head when we re-timed that one.
Okay. And also, Gentry, the lights right now are timed perfectly if you want to hit each light red. So, I'm thrilled that you're going to that next, because really, when you're coming back from Dallas and you're tired and you hit each one of those lights, you're just like, oh, my gosh. So, thank you.
Yeah, so just to Gentry and specifically, you know, that's a very painful corridor to drive. Hopefully, people are already seeing some improvements just from the standpoint of, we have already upgraded detection at about five of those intersections on that corridor. So, they're still running free, so there's not coordination, but if there's somebody, if there's nobody on the side street, it's green on Gentry, which before, that was not the case. It would be red on the side streets or red on those left turns, even if there was nobody there, because our detection was not working. So, with those upgrades and that investment, you're already seeing some reduction and some improvements, but I think once we do this project, hopefully, we'll make a lot more people happy and reduce some frustrations.
Well done.
Well, for me, it's kind of a wash on the efficiency thing, because as I've told Cameron before, previous years, I was able to check and manage all my email at the red lights before I got downtown, and now I have to carve out time to do emails at a later time. So, it's kind of a wash on efficiency for me.
Lloyd, put your phone down while you're driving.
Hey, Cameron, as we go back through, recycle through the lights, are you going to, is it going to be in the same groups, or will you go back and, which ones do we want to look at first? Do you reevaluate, or is it set?
So, we'll definitely reevaluate, and that's one of the things, hopefully, as we've been upgrading our system, we're also starting to get more data back. And so, we'll be able to do a better job of kind of prioritizing of saying, hey, have we seen a reduction in our travel times on this corridor? Or, well, yeah, we re-timed that five years ago, but it's still flowing well, it's operating similar, there's really no need to go back and re-tim it. Right now, we're still kind of in the mode of, we haven't touched it, let's evaluate, let's get a good baseline, but, you know, ideally, we're going to get a little smarter and be able to kind of better pick and choose of, A, we need to focus, and maybe it's not a wholesale re-timing, it's just a few tweaks here and there. But we're, you know, getting that data, getting those processes in place, and the resources to do that.
But to have traffic, I guess, flowing the best it can, this is something that never stops, you've got to keep doing that.
Absolutely. And I give, you know, Beckham as a perfect example, is, you know, that again, that was 2019 as part of the original master plan study. That corridor around the hospital from really Fifth Street up to Gentry was re-timed, but you can just imagine with the new med school going in there and how that's going to change the travel patterns on, what timing do we need on Lake Street and Hospital that didn't necessarily need that much demand before? So, we got to do some tweaks and re-evaluation of that.
So, Cameron, I want to first thank you for that new traffic light at MLK and Gentry. So, tell me again why it was a problem to go down Gentry Parkway? You said it was...
Yeah, so we have, the vehicle detection is the equipment at the intersection that basically tells you whether or not a vehicle is wanting to be served. Think of it as a doorbell, you know, hey, somebody's here. And so, our detection, those intersections are so old, and the detection was broken. It wasn't working. So, if there was nobody on, say, Parkdale, we had to serve, give them green time, because we couldn't tell if somebody was there. Now that we have that detection upgraded, if we can tell if somebody's on Parkdale, if there was nobody there, we can keep it green on Gentry. And the same thing for the left turns, that was another big thing that you saw, is even give a green arrow for a left turn movement, and there was nobody there, and you're sitting there waiting.
Sure, got it. Okay. With that being said, I'd like to offer a motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
So, moved.
Second. Got a motion by McCellar, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those who favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cameron. Darren.
All right, Darren Jennings, city engineer. Want to talk about Onyx Seal Coat Program here. Basically, what we're here for is to request city council to consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Innovative Roadway Solutions for the construction of the 2024 Onyx Seal Project in the amount of $362,975.35. So, what I want to do is, as y'all probably know, we have many options for our maintaining or for maintenance of asphalt streets. We have the fog seal, we have seal coat, chip seal, Onyx, pressure pave, overlay, and you'll see crack sealing, and as part of some of that, we have the milling also. So, you'll see different types of overlays here, different thicknesses, and we're using a different type of asphalt in it. But you see how expensive those are when we overlay compared to a seal coat or chip seal, which are similar, where it's only $3.00 a square yard. But, you know, spock seal is considerably cheaper, and frankly, there's a reason. It's not near as beneficial, it doesn't last near as long, so we really use it in very, very limited areas, and a lot of times, we even only use that on top of something else to, if there's a little bit of cracking shown or something like that, just to help seal it off. That's the only time we would use it, typically complimentary with something else. The Onyx seal and seal coat are relatively similar. The one big thing about an Onyx is, we use an Onyx for residential street with, I don't say limited traffic, but not near like an arterial or a major arterial or anything like that. We're going to use it for something like that, because the wear and tear, and whereas used is where the surface asphalt has either worn off because of weathering or use or anything like that, we're going to go in there and this will preserve that for pretty cheap comparatively and extend the life of that residential street. Tech dot's been using it, has approved it for shoulders, use on their shoulders for seal those, or not the main lanes, but shoulders which have limited traffic on them also. Now, this is also used by many cities around the state and around the nation, but it's also, we've used it for several years now also with good results. So, I want to do, show you also, it's, I just want to, generally, we want to show you where the residential streets are in town. We can go into a little more detail on these, but this just shows you where we are going to use them. It's about 17 lane miles included with this project, and we took, there's, we actually went out for bids, opened bids on March 12th. We had one bidder, Innovative Roadway Solutions. There are more contractors that do this, but we typically only receive one bid, because there's typically really only one contractor in this area of Texas that does this. And we compare it to other places around, and it is a good price, they're not sticking us or anything like that, and it's still a fair price for it. And Chuck did the engineer's opinion of probable construction cost, and they actually came in very close to, so, but he's been using prices from previous years, so that gives us a good standard of, that they're giving us good, fair prices here. As you can see, it's right in where we expected it, and right now, the, this is what we paid out of the Streets General Fund project from Sarah's Capital Projects Fund. So, it is recommended city council consider authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Innovative Roadway Solutions for the construction of 2024 Onyx Seal Project in the amount of $362,975.35.
Darren, can you explain the process on how the specific street gets on this list?
Yes. What we do here is, the streets are evaluated every four years. We have a company that comes in and literally just goes over the streets and evaluates and comes up with a pavement condition index. These streets, and then after that, they give that to us, and we go out and drive them, because we know some of the, I don't want to call them deficiencies, but some of the limitations of things, like if you have, for instance, if you have a street cut with, from a utility, that dramatically drops the pavement condition index for that stretch of road. But really, that's just a very limited area, and it doesn't necessarily mean the whole area of that whole street, that whole segment is bad shape, it just means that one area, but that criteria in there drops that dramatically. Sometimes, seal coat, if you'll see a crack sealing in there, that can drop it too, but it's not necessarily a problem with the street, but it's just the way the computer does that. So, we go in and we verify all that and revise those accordingly. So, these were come, these streets that were identified here were actually identified as still in good condition, but having some heavy lacking of the base or the surface asphalt.
Does the Onyx have an aggregate in it, or is it just a coating?
It's really more of a coating. What this is, is, and that's the biggest difference between this and like a seal coat, because it doesn't have the coarse aggregate with it.
Okay.
So, that's why residential streets per, more, it's a quieter road, as is that also.
Can you put the slide back onto the, yeah, there are no... Somehow, you, we got that one.
I'm going backwards.
Yeah. Mayor, did you have a question, sir?
No.
Oh.
You don't?
I just wanted to write the slide.
This one?
Any other questions? Move to approve, M3. Second. Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those who favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. M4.
M4. Now, let's talk about Miracle League of Tyler. As y'all, if y'all may remember, we went through and had a resolution here last month approving the city some funding, $500,000 out of the Hacent Sales Tax, was approved in February there with them, for the Miracle League of Tyler baseball field. They have raised almost $2 million, including ours, as for part of this, and I just want to let you see, as part of that, Harris Craig Architects was contracted with Miracle League of Tyler to design all this. They had a civil engineer on staff or on their team also, obvious engineering. And, but because, when we took, when we submitted and approved the $500,000, we took over the management of the project from Miracle League of Tyler. So, all their contracts were with Miracle League, so we're transferring basically those over to finish the plans and finish the project itself, just basically transferring that over. So, and that's what this here is for. This is about $20,000 to finish the plans. We're at about 90, 95% finished contract documents, and then it'll be for bidding phase and construction phase services also. But I want you to see that it's right here in between the parking lots, they're just north of the tennis courts at Faulkner Park. And just to help you out, this is what it's going to look like from a plan perspective. This over to the right here is a restroom building, and the dugouts and everything are at ground level, and they will be more of an artificial turf, so it won't be not be soil or anything like that, or grass, natural grass, it will be that, so any type of handicap person can get out there, even in a wheelchair. So, here's probably what is the most impressive looking with the, over on the left, you see the restroom building and concessions, and you see the dugout and stands. So, right now, it is recommended the city council consider authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Harris Craig Architects for the completion of the design of the Miracle League of Tyler baseball field in the amount of $20,325.
I'll just make a quick comment. Casey Bryan, one of the guys that brought this forward, is one that lost a son, I believe at the age of nine years old, that had a disability. And he, his son always wanted to participate in baseball. And so, this group has come together and has raised this money for people with physical and mental disabilities, because these kids want to be part of a team. And right now, they're not part of a team. They want to play with people like themselves, and the parents want to be in the stands and cheer on their kids. And so, this is not only going to be for local kids, but it's going to be a draw for people all over the region to come here and be proud of their children and to be part of that team. So, I love this project, and just, I'm just glad the city has some involvement with it. So, any other questions for Darren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that deserves a round of applause.
Move to approve, M4.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McCellar. Any further discussion? All those who favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're down to the consent agenda, and we do have one card on this, so what I'd like to do is pull CA8 and CA9 from the consent agenda and do those first, if we may. Deborah, do you want to do any kind of, speak to these before I come through, or us?
I can, sir. Cassandra. Cassandra. So, CA8 is request that the city council consider adoption of an ordinance canceling the election for the mayor at large and the city of Tyler city council members for districts four and six scheduled for May 4, 2024, and declare the unopposed candidates for the mayor at large and the city of Tyler city council members for district four and six elected to office. The Texas Election Code allows for the cancellation of election under certain circumstances and to declare each unopposed candidate elected to office. The current Tyler city council election for the mayor at large in districts four and six meets that criteria for cancellation since the respective candidates whose names ought to appear on the ballot are unopposed and no proposition is to appear on the ballot.
How about CA9?
CA9 is request that the city council consider adoption of a resolution amending polling locations for a previously called election for the May 4, 2024, to fill the offices of Tyler city council member for the single member districts number two, making provisions for and resolving other matters incident and related to such regular election, and reducing the total number of voting locations throughout Smith County, but increasing the number of polling locations within Tyler city council member district two. At the time of the adoption of resolution number R202416, it was originally believed that a larger number of polling locations would be needed due to the number of council member districts involved. However, on April 10, 2024, the Tyler city council adopted ordinance number O22441, canceling the election for the mayor at large and two Tyler city council member districts for districts four and six scheduled for May 4, 2024, and declaring the unopposed candidates for the mayor at large and Tyler city council districts number four and six elected to office. This left only Tyler city council district number two for the election on May 4, 2024.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Brewer, you want to come up? If you can state your name and address for the record. Do we have to put you on the clock, or can you stop at three minutes?
I have a clock. Is my name and address part of the time?
No.
And really, I hate to disclose my address, because everybody sees all these videos.
Just say your name.
Yeah. Bob Brewer, thanks again for this opportunity. Today, I come to you in the love and law of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and to speak about elections and the details of when and where we perform them. The earliest and most influential text on law and elections was by John Locke, Second Treatise, Section 216, 343 years ago, when he wrote, "When by the arbitrary power of the prince, the elections are altered without the consent and contrary to the common interest of the people, there also the legislative is altered. For if others than those whom the society hath authorized, thereunto do choose, or in any other way than the society hath prescribed, those chosen are not the legislative appointed by the people." What this means, that if we have elections and they are altered by those, altered by those chosen who are not those appointed by the people, then we've lost our liberty, basically. In 2002, elections were altered by the HAVA Act with 3.2 billion of federal money. Those were to replace paper ballots and precinct voting to election machines and regional voting. 96% of Americans now use regional voting locations and machines. Because of all this, Texas, the Smith County GOP, CEC, the state of Texas, and the national, the Republican National Committee have issued resolutions against using equipment that lacks chain of custody and human witnesses who can swear to the authenticity of each vote cast. There are three county, state, and national resolutions are the result, and here in Texas, of election fraud has been the biggest concern of Texas voters over the last three legislative sessions. Early in American history, precincts, now there are 181,000 in the United States, have been maintained to ensure voter confidence in the votes that are cast or the votes that are counted. That is by absolute chain of custody of the people in each precinct, who can be sworn witnesses to swear to the authenticity of every vote count, every vote cast. Precincts in all of America are sized so that all ballots in each precinct can be hand-marked on paper, hand-counted, and reported to the county officials the evening of Election Day. This is without, without paper ballots, this is without paper ballots ever leaving the custody of the precinct election official or the precinct chairman. So, this would simplify some of the things we had on the last agenda item about making a notice, because each precinct is in, you know, like whatever school district, and we would automatically know that we vote there on Election Day, in person, on hand ballots. And I got one second. And I got one second. Nope? I didn't set it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
I'm just, all right, he didn't announce he was a riding candidate for District Six.
Perhaps that's what he wants.
All right, let's take that, let's take action on CA-8.
entertain a motion?
Move to approve CA-8.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Winn. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. CA-9, entertain a motion for CA-9?
Move to approve CA-9.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have the remainder of the consent agenda, which is CA-1 through CA-7.
Move to approve the consent agenda, CA-1 through CA-7, as written.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, city manager's report.
Mayor and council, a few items, one of which was already kind of acknowledged today, especially by Councilman McKeller, on the West Gentry Parkway and West Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, the traffic signal that just got fixed there. The temporary traffic signals, trailers were removed on Monday, March 25, and traffic operations have switched over to the new traffic signal installation. There's a curb ramp, sidewalk, pedestrian signal work that still needs to be completed, but the new signal is operational and providing benefit to motorists traveling through that intersection. A big thank you to our contract and vendors, and especially our City of Tyler Traffic Signal Staff for their hard work in getting the new ATC Signal Cabinet operational. This is just one project currently underway to improve traffic flow along the entirety of Gentry Parkway and the city as a whole. At our last council meeting on March 26, or about that timeframe, we made an announcement about the fact that Bergfeld Park was selected as one of the great places in Texas. And so actually, on that evening, members of our parks and planning staff attended the American Planning Association Texas for the Award Banquet in Austin, Texas, to accept the 2024 Great Places in Texas Award, recognizing Bergfeld Park. Great Places in Texas exemplify exceptional character and highlight the role planners in planning play in creating communities of lasting value. So this is actually our second Great Place in Texas, including the Rose Garden, and there are only, I think, three that were given out this year to recognize. And so we were very excited about that. Going back to the streets, the medians department is working hard to revitalize beds throughout Tyler. So as you're driving around, especially on Loop 323, you probably have seen just different work happening throughout there. They're implementing a new rotation schedule. This schedule has been created to ensure that all beds that require periodic maintenance are being visited and maintained on a regular basis. Many beds around Tyler will have a new look through the selective planning of drought hardy species that we can stand our hot summers and shrubs with late fall colors. Be on the lookout for updated beds on Broadway Avenue beginning this week. Additionally, contractors have been working on filling in the large planer beds near Goodwill on the west southwest loop with stamped red concrete. This bed and several others are being filled as part of the project to help beautify our medians by allowing our crews to focus efforts on fewer beds. Y'all may remember that was one of our budget priorities that we brought to the council this past year. And then finally, I just want to say, just we had a great eclipse, total, totality Tyler, Solar Eclipse event on Monday. We had probably about 500, 600 people downtown on the square, about 200 people over Faulkner Park, 200 at Lindsay Park, and other people just scattered throughout the city as well. Tyler ISD got into it, if you had a chance to ever look at their social media, lots of pictures of kids with their homemade glasses, not burning their eyes out. And, and so it was an exceptional event, quite a bit of fun. Won't happen again in our lifetimes. There will be one that some of y'all will probably see in 2044, but you gotta go travel to go see it. But we had people that actually traveled here from England, Belgium, Venezuela, Canada. There was Tyler from Canada, he was quite popular in the favorite, who had always, his whole life, wanted to come to Tyler, Texas. So this was the opportunity for him. But to have people coming from all over to be able to come here to Tyler, it was a, it was a great opportunity. And from a, our side of the equation of just the safety components and everything, it turned out without a hitch. You know, and so, you know, Chief Kogle, who was recognized earlier today for something special that we've got to keep under wraps around. But that one, he did a great job of maintaining and checking out traffic, watching it, we had the emergency operations center the entire time to just kind of make sure that everything was safe and good for all those who came to Tyler to enjoy that.
There was one gentleman here named Tyler Grant from Canada. And Tyler's goal was to have his picture taken in front of every sign he could find in Tyler that had the word Tyler in it. And I think he just about achieved that goal. And I visited with him Monday at the visitor center, and Tyler said that his favorite thing about the City of Tyler was the kindness that everybody had shown him. And so I say that because that's our community and it made me very proud. And we did present him with the game, it was not Monopoly, but it was called Tyleropoly. And so we gave that to him to take back to Canada. So it wasn't just a bunch of people in town, it was a bunch of people in town that really enjoyed our city. And one last thing, Tom Trimble, I know your hands were full yesterday with Encore, with their polls down, and I apologize that I gave several people your number last night. So, thank you. Any other comments before we go into executive?
You can still buy your autographed totality Tyler poster by the, autographed by the mayor himself at the visitor center. Or we may be giving away now, I don't know. But it's, those are available.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
We're going to go into executive session. The city council may go into executive session regarding Indiana Post on the agenda as authorized by Title V, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters deliberation regarding the following: the employment duties and evaluation of the city manager. Any final action by the city council will be taken in open session. So we're going to go into executive session probably about a half hour or so, so stay tuned, or you can leave. Thank you.
......
Hijack.
Yeah.
We handled it.
Well done, young lord.
We thought, what would Ed do? And we did.
All right.
Doing the handle her inspections.
You ready back there?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, chief. We're back from executive session and we do have action and action item. And who would like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose to amend the city manager's employment contract. First amendment being the annual salary in the amount of $286,650 to be applied retroactively to October 1st, 2023. And the second is deferred compensation deposit in the amount of $26,500 plus all taxes that accrue on the amount to be paid on or about April 12th, 2024. All other employment contract terms to remain the same.
Do you propose to amend or move to amend?
I did move.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Nichols, taken by Haney. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye.
Aye.
The post. Motion carries. Congratulations, city manager. We're glad to have you.
And I did good on the motion.
Exactly.
All right, we're not quite done.
Our councilman is not really sure where the council meetings are.
I understand the motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.